I'd like to call this December 12th, New York School District Board of Trustees meeting to order. First, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to be with us. We do appreciate that. I'm filling in for Chairman Childers tonight, who is a little under the weather. So, I'll toss some prayers with him tonight. First, we'll start off with our invocation from Bishop Alfred Jackson from the Tabernacle of Praise here in York.
Let us pray. Lord, you are God. You reign supreme and you reign alone. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together for this meeting tonight. We invite your presence in our midst. We pray that you will be in control, that you will guide every conversation and every decision that is made. You're the giver of all wisdom, true wisdom. We pray for our school board as they lead this district and make decisions that affect the lives of every child in this district. We pray that you grant them wisdom in their decisions. We pray for the community, that we will stand together and seek the good of all students, all teachers, all staff, so that this community is benefited, so that your name is glorified and your people are blessed. Thank you for this time tonight. Thank you for your presence in this meeting. It's in the name of Jesus Christ that we pray. We thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop Jackson. Appreciate that. Next, we'll have our pledge of allegiance by Maddox. That will be led by Maddox Whitstein from Jefferson Elementary School. Please stand.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maddox. Madam Secretary, let the record reflect, we do have a call. Also, that there was a confirmation of notice to the media. Do we have any media present with us tonight? And we had no requests for public forum. Moving on to the agenda. Board, you received the consent agenda in your board packet. Do I have a motion for approval as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Anderson, second by Ms. Howell, in discussion. If you're not, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, light sign. Motion carries. Next, we move into one of my favorite parts of the board meeting is recognitions. And we'll start off with school spotlight. And tonight, we have with us Jefferson Elementary School, Ms. Maddy Hughes, Principal. Could you come forward?
Good evening. I'm Maddy Hughes, Principal of Jefferson Elementary School.
And I'm Vanessa Heffley, Assistant Principal.
Vice Chairman Revels and members of the board, Superintendent Cox. We want to thank you for this opportunity to highlight some of the work that we're doing there at Jefferson. Tonight, we will talk and showcase a little bit about our school-wide goal. This year, we focused on the instructional practices domain within the student-centered learning, teaching, and learning framework. In order to assure our instructional practices are student-centered, we have to be more attentive to the adult learners, our teachers, and become teacher-centered. We are leaders of learners, and being leaders of learners, we're responsible for our learning as well, ensuring that as adults, we learn as well. So we can become lifelong learners in everything we do. I know you all often heard us talk about this zone of proximal development and work to reach and teach the students in front of us. Well, we have to do the same thing with our adult learners. We need to make sure we are capitalizing on their strength, figuring out that entry point, which will be different from person to person and grade level to grade level. But once we find that strength, we can decide on where we're going to go next and how we're going to get there.
And you may ask how that's going to translate to our students' learning. When we're helping provide our teachers with the things that they need, we're providing, our quality teachers are providing quality learning opportunities, and that will directly impact student growth and achievement. So we're going to take just a moment to impact, to watch and listen to just a snippet of the quality instruction that our leaders of learners have been refining and exploring to meet the needs of all of our students.
We are trying to become more student-centered. So in order to become that student-centered, we need to really look at what the teachers can do, what they need to do, how we can help them. Obviously, when the teachers grow, our students are going to grow. Just like our students come with different experiences and backgrounds and knowledge and information, our teachers are coming to the, to us with the same thing.
I think as a district, we always strive to be the leaders of learners. We expect our teachers to lead our learners in the classrooms, and we, as administrators, want to do the same here at Jefferson. We can't put the cart before the horse. We need to make sure that we're providing them support and PD and different things that'll help them.
So each teacher will have a different entry point of where they are ready to tackle something new or even stretch something that they've already been doing. So it's about being responsive to them. So we have to be teacher-centered also, as well as student-centered.
We had a lot of PDs last year on small group instruction, but we've talked a lot about like student-centered learning this year and making sure that like they're getting exactly what they need. And obviously, every kid is somewhere different. Like, you're never, ever going to have a class of kids that are all ready to learn the same thing at the same time. Ms. Hughes like always says that growth takes care of achievement, and a big way to hit that growth is to target them where they are.
So we have been working on the Hegarty, which has been really good with the science of reading. So we did a quick training on the Hegarty at the beginning of school. And then they gave us like a site that has like some links so you can watch, actually watch somebody do it. So we do the Hegarty in the morning, and then when they come back from lunch to come into the classroom, they call it a password, which kids love. And so I incorporate whatever some of the rhyming words we use from Hegarty in the morning. And then they have to come in the room, they give me a rhyming word.
Getting up professional development with the say, the mean, and the matter to boost up our writing scores, it is phenomenal. It's still a learning process. We still learning as we growing, but I have dwelled into that and I absolutely love it.
The administrators have really supported us in this work. We are, we've decided to have must-dos and can-dos, and so there are things that they have to do to, to show us that they have met mastery. And we're really putting the learning and the, the understanding in our students' hands, where they have to show us that they understand.
They love Math Lab. When I put the thing up on the Promethean board and they see the M-A-T-H, you hear cheers because they enjoy, and it doesn't matter whether they're at your seat or they're doing the games or they're with me at the table. They're, or at Technology, they're excited about what they're going to do because they know it's going to be active. They're going to be doing it. You know, they're not sitting and getting, I'm not, you know, trying to just teach or lecture. You know, they know they're going to be doing something that's fun. It has made a difference. We just did a Mastery Connect test, and the majority of them made 100 on that test. And I think that's a direct result of the many lessons, but also the, the purposeful practice that they all had to do. And I just think it was a game changer for them.
We want to be able to, at the end of this year, have pre- and post-tests or assessments. We want to be able to make sure we can identify what quality instruction looks like and quality activities also look like from class to class, grade level to grade level. And then we want to make sure we have some opportunities where we do some learning walks so we can know that, okay, the work that we have done, it's, it matters, it counts, it, it has benefited all.
We would definitely be remiss to thank our technology department, our instructional development people for our help with that. They've been our thinking partners through a lot of this. They've challenged us to move beyond our comfort zone and our teachers' comfort zone, and we thank you all for your work in that. We also want to thank you all again for this opportunity to talk about Jefferson. Our theme this year is "Big journeys begin with small steps." And we would love for you all to come by and see firsthand our small steps that we're continuing to take toward excellence. Thank you all again.
Any board members have any questions, comments? We're excited about what's going on in the future.
Thank you.
How's all that confidence? Next, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Lisa Spangriff for student and staff recognition. And Mr. Anderson will be assistant along with Ms. White.
Good evening. I speak on behalf of the board, I believe, in saying it's so good to see so many out tonight, and thank you for coming to celebrate so many people. I'd like to ask Dr. John Tharp, who's the principal at York Comprehensive High School, to come forward, along with Coach Chad Cooksey. The York Comprehensive High School Female Strength Team took nine outstanding ladies to the 2023 Female State Strength Meet at Blythewood High School, where they competed against 300 other female athletes from 50 different high schools. Out of the nine weight classes, we had four state champions and one runner-up. These ladies competed in three events, the standing broad jump, bench press, and squat. They represented York with great performance in class. So ladies, if you'll come forward. Grace and Carol, 120-pound state champion. Okay. She is an athlete, right? Jordan Welch, 130-pound state champion, and the only perfect scorer in the entire meet. Brooklyn Dial, 130-pound state finalist. Basketball. Narnia Miller, 140-pound state finalist. About to say, we don't want to mess with the basketball team. A.C. Lingerfeld, 150-pound state champion. Yay. Riley Bug Comer, 160-pound state champion. Brissa Rayes, 160-pound state finalist. Cam Hefter, 170-pound state finalist. Aria Haynes, 170-pound state finalist. Alexis Rayes, all-state 200-pound weight class. Volleyball. Congratulations, ladies and coach.
May I say something before?
Absolutely.
I would like to also thank Coach Lehman. Stand up, please. Coach Lehman helps us in the weight room every day. He does a fantastic job building relationships with his girls. Coach Hagan, she's here as well. She's also one of our assistant strength coaches. And we love to have you, Dr. Johnson, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'd like to invite Cotton Belt Elementary School's Principal, Ms. Megan Hoyt, to come forward, along with Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center Director, Dr. Lee Green, please. As part of York Electric's Bright Ideas Grants, they've awarded selected teachers from across their service territory with a total of $10,000 in wish list fulfillments. In September, their peers submitted nomination forms describing why the teacher they nominated should receive a wish list fulfillment grant, either for $100 or for $500. Congratulations to the following who were chosen. Angie Covington from Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center. Janet Maslinkowski from Cotton Belt Elementary. I promise I practiced your name and still messed it up. Sorry. And Scotty Horn from Cotton Belt Elementary. Congratulations, ladies. I'd like to ask Ms. April Olmer, who's the Director of Elementary Programs, to come forward. Tonight, we're recognizing Jessica Elliott. York School District One proudly acknowledges and celebrates Jessica Elliott, Program Coordinator of Parenting Partnerships and the Family Resource Center, for her outstanding leadership and dedication that resulted in the program being named among the top four finalists for the prestigious 2023 Dick and Tonki Raleigh Watt Works South Carolina Award. The Watt Works South Carolina Award, presented annually by the Raleigh Institute at Furman University, recognizes exceptional programs that positively impact public education. Jessica's leadership and the transformative work of Parenting Partnerships have played a crucial role in achieving this recognition. Parenting Partnerships is a vital initiative aimed at providing parents with the education, information, and resources needed to meet the developmental needs of their children. The program's mission is to support parents in their role as their child's first and most important teacher, providing school readiness for vulnerable children. Through partnerships with various organizations and the utilization of a parent's teacher's curriculum, the program offers a comprehensive approach to child development, creating a strong foundation for success. The award celebration was held on November 7th at Columbia Metropolitan Convention Center, and the former U.S. Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, was a keynote speaker, adding to the significance of this recognition. York School District One congratulates Jessica Elliott and the Parenting Partnerships team on their well-deserved achievement and wishes them continued success. I'd like to invite up Ms. Becky Funderburke, who's Coordinator of Instructional Technology Integration, along with our technology coaches, Carrie Mann, Leigh Ziegler, Kristen Harwick, and Delora Idah Henry. We are delighted to recognize a cohort of exceptional educators who have been selected as the Student-Centered Learning Fellows for the 2023-24 school year within York School District One. These educators have exemplified a commitment to advancing student-centered learning practices within our district. Through a rigorous application process and the submission of artifacts showcasing their proficiency in implementing student-centered learning approaches in their classrooms, these teachers have demonstrated their dedication to fostering an environment where every student's learning experience is at the forefront. These fellows have pinpointed specific strengths within the student-centered learning, teaching, and learning framework, which serve as focal points for learning walks and professional development sessions that they lead. Their dedicated efforts to enhance the capacity of fellow educators play a crucial role in advancing the adoption of student-centered learning practices district-wide. This initiative represents more than just a recognition. It signifies a collective effort to spread capacity and continuous support for those who have embraced student-centered learning as a guiding principle. Tonight, each fellow will receive a plaque to display outside their classroom door and a specially-designed pen that includes the Student-Centered Teaching and Learning Framework logo. Please join me in extending congratulations to the following teachers for their remarkable dedication and commitment to advancing the educational landscape within our district. Sarah Nivens with the Domain of Instructional Practices from Cotton Belt Elementary School. Rita Woodley, whose domain was environment at Cotton Belt Elementary School. Claire Roberts, whose domain was instructional practices from Herlsey Johnson Elementary School. From York Comprehensive High School, Jessica Gregory from the Environment Domain. Also from the high school, Sarah Perkins, whose domain was instructional practices. From York Intermediate School, Lisa Beck, whose domain was collaborative practices. Also from York Intermediate, Tierney Norris, with the Domain of Assessment and Reflective Practices. Megan Smith from York Intermediate with the Domain of Instructional Tools, I'm sorry. Instructional Tools. From York Middle School, Anna Greis with the Domain of Environment. She's home with a new baby. Robin Madden from the middle school with the Domain of Instructional Practices. Congratulations.
Next, we'll have Ms. Jennifer Bowlen, Director of Human.
Good evening. We're going to recognize our retirees, and some of these people had retired at the end of last school year, during the summer, or even maybe this first semester of this school year. We often speak highly of York School District One as a great place to work and learn. What makes us great are the people who serve day-in, day-out with passion and commitment to excellence. At this time, we would like to recognize our mid-year retirees for the 2023-24 school year and 2223 school year. When I call your name, please come up front and receive your recognition. First from Jefferson is Maddie Hughes, if you'll come up and join me. Our first retiree, oh, sorry. She's the principal at Cotton Belt Elementary School. She's not telling us anything. Maddie, no. Sorry, Maddie. Our first retiree is Karen Parker. Ms. Parker is retiring after 37 years of service and education. Ms. Parker has taught at the elementary level, virtual school, and a special education teacher. Her gentle demeanor has touched the lives of hundreds of children. Her hard work, dedication, and support will be dearly missed. She has demonstrated loyalty and commitment during her tenure in York School District One. We thank Mrs. Parker for her outstanding years of service, and may she enjoy her retirement years. Congratulations, Ms. Parker. Our next retiree is Andrea Phillips. Mrs. Phillips' compassion, steady, dependable, and passion for making a positive difference in children's lives are all ways to describe Andrea Phillips. Mrs. Phillips served as a kindergarten teacher for 22 years here in York School District One. During that time, she has been a team lead and a valuable resource for new teachers at our school. She significantly impacted the lives of our students, staff, and families. Mrs. Phillips, thank you for your outstanding service over the years, and may you enjoy your retirement. Congratulations, Ms. Phillips. Our next retiree, I'm not sure she's here, is Blanche Ward, but we're going to go ahead and read about Ms. Ward. Mrs. Ward is gentle, compassionate, and dependable, all the qualities that describe Blanche. As an instructional assistant in special education class for eight years, Mrs. Ward truly loved her students. Some of the most difficult situations could be calmed by her warm smile and cheerful disposition. To know her is to love her, and we certainly wish her the very best in her retirement. Mrs. Ward, you will be missed. Congratulations, Mrs. Ward. Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Now to join me is Brian Grayson, our Director of Special Services, and we're going to bring up Crystal Sandifer, Principal at Harold C. Johnson Elementary. Our next retiree is Vicki Revels, Behavior Services Coordinator. Mrs. Revels is retiring from York School District One after faithfully serving special-needs students and their families for 42 years. Hold up, Vicki. Ms. Revels served in multiple roles, including teaching and leading programs at the Education Service Center, Jefferson Elementary, and Harold C. Johnson Elementary School. In addition to being an excellent, caring, and dedicated teacher for many years, she was instrumental in the development of the autism program for preschool students in our district. During this time, she trained and supervised dozens of applied behavior therapy assistants, many of whom still continue to serve students today. Her role as YSG One Behavior Services Coordinator allowed for the training and professional development, consultation, and support of district administrators, fellow teachers, and related staff. Her expertise was second to none, and she will truly be missed. Mrs. Revels, best wishes to you in this time of retirement. The phrase "well deserved" doesn't seem adequate, but we all do wish you well. Thank you for 42 years of dedicated service to York School District One. Thank you, Ms. Sandifer. Thank you, Mr. Grayson. Next up is Cotton Belt Elementary, if Megan Hoyt will join me. That was hard for me to say, y'all. As the principal of Cotton Belt Elementary. Our next retiree is Sharon Wallace. Mrs. Wallace is retiring from Cotton Belt Elementary after 13 years of dedicated service with York School District One. Always smiling and willing to lend a hand, Ms. Sharon has been such a valuable asset to food service at our school. We will greatly, she will greatly be missed by both her team and by her students and staff. Thank you for being such a bright and positive light in our school. You are so loved and appreciated. Your hard work and your dedication certainly did not go unnoticed. We wish you wonderful and well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Mrs. Wallace. Next up, we have York Middle School and Kelly Mondo Assistant Principal, if you'll come up and join me. Our next retiree is Ms. Kim Childers. Mrs. Childers will surely be missed. She has worked at Harold C. Johnson and York Middle School during her time here at York School District One. Kim will always be remembered as a friendly, very efficient team player. If you combine that with a great attitude, this surely describes Kim. She has been known to go above and beyond while doing her job. Once at York Middle School, she had and another coworker thought the bathrooms were too plain, so they took it up upon themselves to paint colorful murals on the walls to brighten them up. Good luck in your retirement and best wishes in the future. Congratulations. Next, we have York Comprehensive High School, so Dr. Tharp, Principal, if you will join me. Our next retiree is Teresa Goldinger. Mrs. Goldinger has retired after four years of dedicated service with York School District One. Mrs. Goldinger held a couple of positions within York School District One and positively touched the lives of many. As a teacher assistant and as a food service associate in our district, she worked in food service at Jefferson and retired as a classroom teaching assistant at YCHS. Mrs. Goldinger will truly, we truly appreciate you giving your life to the service of others. May you be blessed with an enjoyable and peaceful retirement, well-deserved and well-done. Congratulations, Mrs. Goldinger. All right, next is from our Maintenance Department, so Charlie Westbrook, our Director of our Maintenance Department, please join us. And our next retiree is Mike Taylor. Mike Taylor is retiring from York School District One Maintenance Department after eight years of service. Mike mostly handled plumbing and water issues for the district and was a great all-around maintenance employee here in the district. Mike never minded anyone calling him for help and was always ready to jump in wherever help was needed on any job. Your presence in the shop will be missed, and you will be, it will be very hard to replace you. We wish you all the best in whatever you are doing going forward. Congratulations, Mike. Let's give another round of applause for all our retirees. Can I go fourth? Our next award is part of our Employee Recognition Program, and we have an award called the Legacy Builder Award. And I'll give you a little description of this award. A legacy builder is, a legacy is an outlasting impact on a particular person's actions. A legacy builder is ordinary people doing extraordinary things in York School District One. They are change agents who dare to make a difference. The Legacy Builders Award honors a significant individual's work that complements the York One mission to learn, serve, and give as one. Legacy builders serve as consistent models of the beliefs and commitments of the district. These individuals are not only leaders within their schools or departments, but also invested in the community. They conduct themselves in a way that we have classified as the York Way. This is a distinguished award that promotes the climate and culture that you are trying, we are trying to establish within our schools and the district. These individuals who are exemplars for others, demonstrating outstanding work ethic, professionalism, attitude, drive, and community service. These individuals were nominated by anyone within our district. However, the nomination had to have a letter from the recipient's principal or department head to accompany it. Then all the nominees were reviewed by committee using the criteria and the description of the award, and then we, they were selected off of a point value. Our first recipient is Dr. Anne Whitty. Dr. Anne Whitty's Principal Cassidy Valerino stated, "Dr. Whitty's role as the York Middle School Instructional Coach plays a pivotal role in fostering the positive climate and culture we aim to establish within our school and district. By creating an inclusive and welcoming learning environment while working with adults and students alike, she sets the tone for respectful collaboration, open communication among the students, staff, and community. Dr. Whitty understands the importance of diversity and actively incorporates diverse perspectives into her teaching and coaching processes, promoting a sense of belonging for all. She prioritizes the social and emotional well-being of students, recognizing that a supportive atmosphere enhances learning outcomes. Through innovative teaching methods and a commitment to continuous improvement, Dr. Whitty inspires a growth mindset and a culture of lifelong work, learning within our adult learners and students. By modeling empathy, integrity, and enthusiasm for education, Dr. Whitty contributes significantly to the development of a positive educational climate that empowers students to thrive academically and personally. Dr. Whitty consistently exhibits an outstanding work ethic, professionalism, and an unwavering drive to uplift the educational experience. Her commitment to excellence, which is our York Middle School focus for the year, is evident in the meticulous planning and execution of co-teaching lessons, as well as in their responsive to the diverse needs of students. With a positive attitude that radiates enthusiasm for learning, she inspires colleagues and students alike. Dr. Whitty goes above and beyond by actively engaging in professional development, staying abreast of educational advancements, and continuously refining her teaching methods. Moreover, her dedication extends beyond the classroom. She enthusiastically participates in community service initiatives such as serving on the York, on the Strategic Change Agenda Committee, involvement and literacy incentives in the community, and on the Board of the Public Library. Dr. Whitty is demonstrating a genuine concern for the well-being of the broader community. Through her exemplary work ethic, professional demeanor, optimistic attitude, and commitment to the community service, this educator serves as a beacon of inspiration and a catalyst for positive change within the educational landscape. Congratulations, Dr. Whitty." Our next recipient is Michelle Graham. She's going to be mad at me about this. Mrs. Graham's Principal, Dr. Tharp, stated, "Michelle has worked in York School District One for over 25 years and has been there at York Comprehensive High School for many of those years. Her performance as a special education assistant teacher is exceptional. She has a tremendous work ethic. She is dependable and very caring for our most vulnerable students. She has a, has had perfect attendance for several years, showing up daily to work with the students in her classroom. Michelle is an extraordinary assistant teacher at YCHS. The students in her class need consistent attention because of their extraordinary challenges, and she maintains a pleasant disposition and a sense of purpose for helping all of her students. She comes to work every day with a smile on her face, an infectious energy, enthusiasm for the students under her care. Her creativity, ability to relate to the students, and willingness to go the extra mile to ensure her students have a positive and growth-oriented school experience all make her a prime candidate for this award as a legacy builder. Michelle is anything but ordinary. She is an exemplar. Michelle has a work ethic like no other individual. She arrives at work early with a smile on her face, positive attitude, and always willing to go the extra mile with no questions asked. Michelle works with the most fragile students in our district who need very personal care, and she does it with the most love. Michelle is well-deserving of the Legacy Builders Award because she is a constant model of YSG One's district beliefs and commitments. Thank you for considering Michelle Graham for this honor, and I again highly recommend her for York School District One Legacy Builder Award. Congratulations." Our next two recipients are going to be very surprised by this, so they are Ms. Lisa Spangler and Ms. Amy Hagner. Superintendent Cox stated, "Lisa Spangler and Amy Hagner deserve commendation for their exceptional work establishing the Utility Line Worker Program at Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center. In the fall of 2018, several of us attended a workforce seminar highlighting the immediate need for line workers due to the aging workforce. As a result, they, we began to ponder the feasibility of creating our very own Utility Line Worker Program on Floyd D. Johnson Technology Center campus. Amy and Lisa immediately assumed the lead in this initiative after. Despite facing challenges and skepticism during their initial stages, Lisa and Amy persevered. They navigated the complexities of establishing a private, a public-private partnership, overcoming hurdles such as the program spanning district lines with York School District, I mean Clover School District. Undeterred, they immersed themselves in the learning and technology of intricacies of the field, revisited partnerships, and a year later celebrated the groundbreaking in October of 2019. Today, the success of the Utility Line Worker Program at Floyd D. Johnson stands testament to their dedication. Their efforts recently gained well-deserved recognition as the program, as the program was celebrated on the Southern Regional Education Board's Promising Practices Podcast and Bulletin. This landmark achievement makes Lisa Spangler and Amy Hagner prime candidates for the recognition of York School District One Legacy Builder. Additionally, a heartfelt thank you is extended to Dr. Green and his staff for their ongoing dedication to the program's success. Congratulations." And our last recipient, but not least by no means, is Ms. Latoya Lowry. Ms. Lowry's Principal, Maddie Hughes, stated, "As a dedicated educator, Ms. Lowry has left an, a wonderful mark on the lives of countless students, embodying the qualities and characteristics that this award seeks to honor. Ms. Lowry has tirelessly devoted her time, energy, and expertise to shaping young minds and nurturing the growth of our students for over 25 years. She has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty, instilling a genuine love of learning and compassion and resilience in all those fortunate enough to be in her classroom. Ms. Lowry was, has recognized the importance of adapting and evolving her instructional methods to meet all the, her students' unique needs. Recognizing the importance of reaching her students on a deeper level, Ms. Lowry has embarked on a transformative journey to reshape her teaching approach. With unwavering dedication and commitment to excellence, she has innovative techniques and alternative teaching practices to create a more effective learning experience for her students. Through her self-reflection and professional development, Ms. Lowry realized that her previous instruction was not fully meeting the diverse learning needs of her students. Rather than being complacent, she proactively sought new strategies and approaches to better engage and support her students' growth. The impact of Ms. Lowry's transformation is evident in the progress and enthusiasm displayed in by her students. They are more actively engaged in their learning, demonstrating improved academic achievement, increased competence, and genuine passion for learning. Ms. Lowry's commitment to meeting her students where they are academically and emotionally has enabled them to make significant strides in their educational journey. For her exceptional commitment to growth, adaptability, and hold-heartedly... For her exceptional commitment to growth, adaptability, and wholeheartedly nominate Ms. Lowry for the Legacy Builder Award. Her willingness to acknowledge the need for change in her subsequent transformation and her instructional practices exemplifies her dedication to providing the best education possible for her students. Thank you for this consideration of this nomination. Congratulations, Ms. Lowry.
So before everybody exits and just receives recognition, I almost made it. I'd like to, I did speak to the retirees before the session. Again, we appreciate your dedication to the school district for what you've done with our children and the York School District One family. We will be here, we're not going anywhere, so you're welcome back.
That's right. That's right. Just let me know.
And I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize the family members
Yes.
of those people recognized, both retirees and the legacy award winners. So please stand up if you're attending with a retiree or a legacy award winner. And with that, I bid you all good night. If you'd like to leave, you can stay with us. We're glad to have you for the rest of the meeting, but if you'd like to leave now would be a good time.
Thank you, Coach. That's exactly right.
Continuing on with the agenda. Officer Hughes, Resources, Ms. Jennifer Bowles.
Well, good evening again. My first item is an information item, a certified retirement. It is Karen Parker, which we recognize this evening, of course, and it would be effective right before Christmas break, 12:31, 2023. Our next item is an action item, and this is certified recommendations.
Before you have certified recommendations for the 2023-2024 school year, I'll remind you, if there's any discussion during the executive sessions, do I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by Mr. Anderson. Second by Ms. Faulkner. Any discussion? You now assume to read the vote, all in favor, 75% say aye. All opposed, like aye.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent for Academic Innovation and Professional Enjoyment, Dr. Latoya Dixon.
She's unable to be with us this evening. Her in the process of determining if we are winners of the District of Distinction Award. So I'll be presenting her item for her this evening. She has second and final reading of calendar for '23, '24, '25 school year, and it is uploaded there for you, and she's asking for approval.
Board members, you've heard the recommendation from the staff for the 2024-2025 school calendar. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Same move.
Motion by Mr. Anderson. Second. Second by Mr. McSwain, any discussion? All in favor, 75% say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carries. Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations is Amy Hagner.
Good evening, board members. First item is an action item, has second reading of Gavin's Law, and I ask for your approval for second reading.
Do we have a recommendation for staff for the second reading of Gavin's Law? Do we have a motion to that effect?
Same move.
Motion by Ms. Faulkner.
Second.
Second by Ms. Howell. Any discussion? All in favor, 75% say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is just for information regarding our food service on-site reviews. Just as a reminder, this is a federal requirement that we're to conduct the reviews annually at all schools by February 1st. We look at our meal counting and our claiming procedures, so even though we're a CEP district, we still have monitoring visits, so we still have to go out and visit the schools for, look at our breakfast program and our lunch program. And so Ms. Holt and I have started those visits, and we'll conclude those in January. So that's just for information. Okay, thank you.
Officer Superintendent, Ms. Cox.
Thank you, Chairman Vice Chair Rebels. The first item that we have is the School Board Association Report. Chairman Childers and Ms. Johnson were able to attend and I believe wanted to speak to some of the information that they mentioned.
First of all, good evening. The conference convened in Charleston, South Carolina on December 1st to the 3rd of this year, and on Saturday, the delegation assembly is a very interesting conference, but it talked about things that we talk about all the time. The shortage of teachers and salary schedules. It was interesting to see that most of the delegation was not aware of impact fees. Chairman Childers did get up and ask a question about the impact fees. They were lost. Did make me feel real good. But it was interesting to see that they were not aware that our county makes the decision. And they talked about a few minutes that perhaps school districts need to take that into their own hands. There were 67 school districts represented at the delegation. The delegation in the afternoon was voting of the resolutions, which got to be very, very lengthy. We had 33 resolutions that we had to address. Fifteen of those were full by districts in South Carolina. At the end, all of them became a part of passing. We had one that we sent back to the officers for reconsideration. The second part of the delegates' assembly was the deletion of one of the resolutions. We voted against it. We kept it. It dealt with lawsuits. So we felt that as an assembly that it should be kept. So if you have time, go out there and read about the different resolutions. Took a lot of discussions. We were in there for four hours. So I would advise us to keep abreast of those resolutions. Thirty-three were a lot to go through. We did have some elections. As you know, Chairman Childers is representing our 13th region. Our new president comes from Fort Mill School District, Ms. Brandon, and she did an excellent speech on Sunday morning. If any of you know me, I attended every session of the whole convention. I didn't miss anything. And on Sunday morning, it was very interesting to see those leaders. We had one from the South Carolina School, from the league, which is, some people wanted to go away, did y'all know that? Well, we were highly, let it stay, let it stay, because how do we do our athletic league association if we get rid of the people who know the most about it? They told us who formed the committees and all of those things. But it was a very interesting delegation, took lots of notes, most of which was just reinforcements of the things that I already knew. But it was interesting to see that a lot of people did not know a lot of things. Interesting people there talking to us, representing the entire areas of South Carolina. And I do say that we need to keep spreading the word of us getting involved and letting people know that we care about our students. That was the main focus that I walked away with. Unless we care about the students that we serve, nobody else will. Did y'all understand what I just said? Unless we care about the students we serve, nobody else will. And I was proud to say that York School District One cares about the students, the faculty, the staff, and all of its employees as represented tonight. I want to also mention, not to put one recognition above any others, because I was pleased to see everyone and the retirees. But I was real pleased with the Raleigh Institute. Ms. Howell, Mr. Childers, and I had a chance to go to that service, and it made me feel, I can't speak for them, it made me feel very happy to be a part of such a prestigious event. I talked to Secretary Duncan, I talked to Secretary Riley, and I, you know, it's good to meet people on different levels. But it was good to know that York School District was one of the four finalists. Normally, they have three, but this year, there was four. And it made us feel real good to be a part of that. But again, the delegation was good, long, but not boring. You know, even though you know things, you can still pick up something each and every time. So I do encourage us to read those resolutions and read them prior to the sessions, so when we go in there, people know what they're talking about. Pulling 14 resolutions took a long time, which ended up, they went through anyway. So pulling them didn't matter. So only one had real substance to it, and the deletion. So behalf of the board, I represented us well. I voted both times for both of our votes, and we were among those that were there. I sit among the other school districts in York County, of course. And believe it or not, they would say, "Ms. Brandon, how you gonna vote?" I said, "Just watch me." So it was very good. I met a lot of people, new board members from Clover. We had that whole board there, of course, Ms. Brandon became the president. But it was a good session. We will be meeting, our next session will be in February at the annual session. Thank you very much.
About to have your approach into Mr. Johnson.
Next on the agenda is board election of officers. As stipulated in Board Policy BD, you elect your officers for the upcoming year, for the chair to take place at the next subsequent meeting.
So it's time for the election of officers for the next year. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we elect Scott Childers as chair, Chris Revels as vice chairman, and Beth Faulkner as secretary.
Second.
Motion and second, as in any of the nominations. And then I'll assume to read the votes. All in favor of the slate of officers in this motion, Mr. Childers, Mr. Revels, and Ms. Faulkner, 75% say aye. All opposed, like aye. Motion carries.
The final item that I have for you this evening are our upcoming dates. I would like to draw your attention, those of you in your county, it's 13 days until Christmas Day. If you haven't started with shopping, it's probably time to begin. We will be closed for the Christmas break. We will be reopening on January the 8th. January the 8th is a teacher work day for us. Students will not be returning until the 9th. We do have a board meeting scheduled for the 9th. We also have the MLK Parade coming up on January the 13th, and we'll need to discuss if any of you are able to participate in that. They're actually wanting to know from us who will be participating this year. So if you can let Ms. Webb know, that would be great. We will be closed on January the 15th for the MLK Holiday. And the next date that I'd really like to draw your attention to, as well as those in attendance tonight, we have our winter graduation at the high school on January the 18th at 7:00 PM. They're in the process of planning graduation ceremonies, so if you can please let Ms. Webb know if you'll be attending, so that they know exactly how to set up the stage and be prepared for that. And before turning the meeting back over to you, Mr. Revels, if I could just say to those that are here, thank you all. I think we had a very successful first semester, and it's because of what you do. You do as leaders here within the district and the teachers that are still in the room. We have a teacher forum member back there, Emily. So glad to see you back there with us, and I appreciate all that you do to make this first semester successful. Please make sure you rest over the holidays so we can get back out in January.
I'll just echo what Ms. Cox just said. I hope you have time to spend time with your family, rekindle old friendships, travel safe. And we do appreciate all that you do for the school district. We've come a long way, we had a great first semester, and we're looking at another successful semester coming up in the second semester. But I do encourage you to spend time with family and friends, and please travel safe. Don't forget what we used to do. With that, do we have a motion to go into an executive session for contractual matters?
Mr. Revels, I make the motion that we go into executive session for contractual matters.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like aye. We move into executive session.